Pledge of Allegiance. So would you join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Burn your damn name in my eyes. If I had any information.
I think Ted just got here.
Oh, good.
Tell him you're dismissed from meeting. And that's what we're all done.
Yeah, just say, well, the budget looks good then.
Yeah, the meetings are adjourned as you walked in.
Good as the order? No.
Well, I could give a commissioner report, that way at least we get that out of the way.
Well, there's no forum.
Yeah, he's, he can't, yeah, and he's gonna walk in the door here any second.
Oh, well, they don't work here.
Is that one unlocked, I hope?
Yes.
Oh, good.
It's on the right side.
Or the left side. Hi, Ted.
Hello.
Here's every used stat. Did you get pulled over? That I didn't get it to you on time, but there's this nighttime reading you were saying.
All right, thank you very much.
It's like background on the.
Oyster House? Good, on the oyster house?
Yeah, just some, like the Army Corps thing and proposals and plans and stuff like that, but I don't know if you got copies of them.
Great.
Just some verification stuff and. I mean, it's from our construction meeting and stuff, but I got copies of them.
Good. Well, we already did the flag salute.
Okay.
Wants to do it again.
So I'll let you get settled and then we can do consent items.
Uh?
Which one was that, Judy? Was it the third or fourth?
The consent items or the agenda? Consent items?
Yeah. The two sent items were the updated budget and my report.
I'm just looking for it off here.
Oh, look. Does that help?
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you?
Yep.
Got it.
Great, we can share that, my little G sheet. Okay, so the consent items is the approval of the regular meeting minutes, August 8th. Well, it says August 8th here. Let me look what it actually says. It's August 6th. Oh, there's a typo on the agenda.
My bad.
Yep.
I apologize.
So you did, I gotta see, did you fix that for the? Yep. Okay, so I just have to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th.
Okay, I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Action items, general fund vouchers. I'm gonna make sure this is correct. I think that will be $7,937.16. Payroll vouchers, $15,302.76. Water fund vouchers, $82.02. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and C.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Commissioners reports. What have you got, Ted?
Not much, just attended the, is it August? August meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And that was about it.
Okay. Well, I did the port meeting. August 7th was an oyster house meeting. And then August 23rd was an oyster house meeting, but that was with Nicholas Van, who is the Washington State Architect for Archaeological, Washington State Preservation Archaeology and Historical Preservation. Bill Ray, our marine biologist, Larry Coppola, Mike Ross, and Bonnie from North Bay Historical Society, and myself. That was really productive. We got a lot done. We were trying to make some more decisions on how to go about it, what we need to do. We probably will, just to update, we may have to do an archaeological survey for the whole area. Anyway, it was a good meeting, got lots done. August 27th, I went to the North Mason Community Voice. And Dana Rosenbach was our speaker, and she is the North Mason School Superintendent. And also Lee and Mary Swaboda are moving to Idaho, so they were in the paper, and so they were given a gift certificate, thank you Kay, in making that happen. But anyway, there we go. Okay, what have we got next? Travis, you're on. Thank you.
Well, it was a pretty decent month, really. Not a whole lot to talk about. There's a vehicle that's been down there, been on the North Shore for a couple of weeks, been in contact with the owner. He's trying to get the car fixed, keeps saying he's got a wrong part. Now it's gotten to the point where I'm like, hey, we gotta get this car moved, and he's like, yeah, I know, I'm gonna get it towed by Thursday, so. If it's not out of there by Thursday, we might have to take some action. We know how to do that.
Great.
We've had a couple of weddings this month. They were fairly good. I heard from Donnie that there was a little bit of cleanup on his end afterwards, but nothing too out of the ordinary, so. And activity is still pretty heavy, actually, in the park, even in the afternoons and evenings. So it's being well-used, and I haven't had any complaints yet, so.
Yay, that's great.
That's about it.
Good. Thank you, Travis.
Yep.
Okay, Larry, your turn.
All right, water system issues. I spoke with Doug Peel from Northwest Water Systems last week, and he said the state hasn't asked for any additional information, so at this point, he's waiting to receive the approval letter. That'll make our plan valid for 10 years. Nothing more to report on this till we receive a letter. I have released the $7,500 check we had been holding for the work that they did originally for us on the plan. We still owe them $2,500 for the additional work we agreed on. Creating and signing our own warrants, I had a meeting with the Mason County Treasurer last month, and she told me it's not a problem with them for us to write our own checks, as long as we adhere to certain procedures they require. At her request, a change will take place January 1st. That'll also work well with bias and give us time to get all the inevitable kinks worked out of the process. We need to set up a separate bank account to handle this, get checks printed, and some of the other things. Kitsap Bank has sent me all the required paperwork, and I will need you all to decide who will be the eligible signer on the account besides myself and Leanne. Since this won't take effect until January 1st of next year, you may wanna decide who will be next year's board chair, designate that person as the signer. We also need a resolution for the change and a policy and procedure written, which will be on next month's agenda for approval. Ogrin property. We received a letter from Denise Ogrin responding to our letter of August 16th, 2016, requesting the first writ of refusal to purchase their property should they decide to sell it. They have offered it to us for $500,000, and the offer is good till November 1st. State law requires we pay fair market value, which would be determined by a licensed appraiser. In some instances, both buyer and seller engage separate appraisers, and if there's a substantial difference of opinion as to what constitutes fair market value, a negotiated settlement is possible. I'd also like to point out that should we negotiate directly with them, that they would not be subject to paying real estate commission, which is usually 7%. I have enclosed her letter, my response, and our original letter in your meeting packet. 2019 budget process. On tonight's agenda is a revised draft policy, draft copy of 2019 budget for year review. We originally thought about having a public hearing with this tonight, but decided against it until you all weigh in on what you might wanna see changed. We'll need a special meeting later this month for a public hearing, and I'd like to adopt the final draft at the October meeting after a second public hearing. Some things need explanation, and I will attempt to be a bit proactive here and explain what I anticipate your questions might be. What we did here was give you the 2018 budget numbers, as well as a year-to-date budget versus actual numbers, and their percentage of this year's budget for comparison. As you can see, we're on track with the 2018 budget on just about every item except for a few unanticipated expenses. The overall expense budget is up a little over $16,000, but that does include $24,000 for the lobbyists, if you choose to hire them, $5,000 for the oyster house and the capital budget, and $5,000 more for the January to April expenses than in 2000, should be 2018, and a more than $2,000 increase from Endurus. However, on the plus side, revenue is up by an almost like amount. In looking at 2018 expenses, there's a significant amount of one-time expenses that were not budgeted for, like a $26,000 truck, and over $8,000 in grading and new rock for all our parking lots. Also quite a bit more travel than we budgeted for, with the majority of that being mileage and hotels for bias training, which is incorporated in the 2019 budget. As you can see, payroll is up by just over $9,500. While that sounds like a lot, a lot is included in that, including raises for staff, as well as state mandated increases for yourselves. I had discussed the staff increases in advance with Commissioner Scott, so I hope the rest of you will concur. Based on the amount of meetings each of you attend, it's obvious from the year-to-date numbers that Commissioner Scott by far attends many more meetings outside the regular port meetings, which is why her overall compensation is budgeted somewhat higher than the other two commissioners. Also included in the payroll total are significant increases for mileage for everyone over last year. This is one place we did miss the mark in 2018, although, as I said, much of that was unbudgeted travel to Spokane for bias training. The mileage numbers for 2019 are also based on both year-to-date figures, as well as WPPA's 2019 meeting schedules that require travel. For example, the spring meeting will be held in Spokane this year. According to MapQuest, the one-way mileage is 323 miles from here to the Davenport Hotel, meaning that for each attendee, the round-trip cost of mileage is $352.07. We budgeted for three people for that meeting. The environmental seminar will be held in Chilean. The round-trip mileage cost for that is $245.26 per person. We budgeted for two people. The Small Port Seminar in Leavenworth, which everyone usually attends, is 179 miles, or $195.11 per person. WPPA hasn't set a location for the commissioner seminar yet, so we budgeted mileage for all three of you to go to Spokane, that being the worst-case scenario. This is perhaps the largest percentage and dollar increase over last year's numbers, but perhaps the most realistic mileage numbers ever. Also, facilities maintenance numbers are up significantly from last year in what that, from what was budgeted. The bulk of that, over $8,000, was for grading and rock for all our parking lots. This was an expense that wasn't budgeted at all last year, but was needed. We spent more for higher-quality rock with the expectation of only needing to grade it in 2019. Also checked with bias about the amount of our annual fee. They told me to anticipate a 5% increase over what we paid this year, so that cost is in this budget as well. On the revenue side, we won't have revenue numbers for property tax revenue until later in the year, so we did the same thing as we did last year. We added 1% to the number for this year. That number will undoubtedly be higher than we budgeted, which is a good thing and provides us with some cushion. Same thing with the timber tax revenue. We budgeted $11,000 in 2018, but the number has been significantly higher, and the year isn't out yet, which means there could possibly be even more yet to come. As I've done every year, I prefer to budget revenue very conservatively and receive more than we anticipate, and expenses very liberally, so we always have a cushion rather than the other way around. As part of our budgeting process, we have also included a moderate rate increase, $1,000 overall, in anticipated additional revenue for the water system beginning in January, which, as you know, is an enterprise fund. I'll present new rate recommendations at the next meeting. Currently, the waterfront is in the black, which it was not before the increase last year. However, any unexpected repairs will have to come from our general fund reserves, because we have almost no reserves in the waterfront itself. I'd like us to start building reserve for those eventualities. Those kind of things aren't ifs, but whens, and we need to be prepared. Also, this is the next to the last year for the system to be paying back the ADD loan. We've also had our pay station on the North Shore reprogrammed to include credit card discounts we pay, which average about 3.5% per transaction. We've absorbed these costs since installing the machine, but since we've obtained public acceptance of the pay station, I see no reason to continue doing that. This will boost revenue there as well as in Allen when we install the machine here, as our merchant fees will all be covered. However, we didn't budget any of that as additional revenue. Also, we anticipate an amount of additional mortgage revenue in Allen once the Marina project is finished, but didn't account for any of that in our revenue calculations either. One thing I'd like to point out, that while our cash carryover is a healthy $79,303.60, if we hadn't purchased the truck, which was $26,323.42, budgeted $24,000 for the lobbyists, and added $5,000 over last year to our January to April expenses, our cash carryover would be $134,627.26, which is up $32,337.26 over our 2018 total of $102,290. Bias in our 2019 budget. We're still finding anomalies in our bias programming. I anticipate we'll have them all corrected and programmed the way they need to be by year's end. This budget process has been a good thing, as it's helping us discover what and where exactly those anomalies are, so we know what was either hidden, miscategorized, or we simply didn't understand how or why bias set them up like they did, so they can be corrected in 2019. Grant funding. As you can see from the capital budget, we've included significant amounts of grant funding for the oyster house, but didn't include the $160,000 the North Bay Historical Society has obtained, as we felt that might create an issue for the state auditor. We did include money for the possible acquisition of the Ogrin property, asking for the maximum they said they want, but the final number will hinge on the eventual appraised price. Lobbyists, after our last meeting, I contacted Gordon Thomas Honeywell, as you all directed, and asked him to come back and do a presentation to answer any additional questions you may have concerning what they will do for us. I'd originally scheduled them to be here tonight, but since Commissioner Cooper isn't here, it seems kind of pointless, since he was the one with the most questions. Once we schedule the budget meeting for later this month, I'll arrange for them to be here. I have, however, included their previously negotiated cost in the draft budget. I also talked to Kathleen Berontas once again, as you all directed, and haven't received the fee schedule for searching for grants, developing funding strategy, and writing grants and other materials she promised to send. We talked about the oyster house again, and she asked me to send her some information that we still don't have yet relating to specific costs, but I told her we were close to getting those costs together and would send them when I had them. If you decide to move forward, what I will need is approval to sign a contract, as the general amount will exceed my spending authority. You tabled the resolution to cover that last month until a final decision is made, but we'll have it on the agenda again if and when you need it. Dock issues. We had a small electrical fire on the dock a couple of weeks ago. Seems that the flexible conduit feeding the pump-out unit was held in place by a piece of tie wire under the gangway, and it'd been like that for a number of years. Over the years, the constant tidal action caused a tie wire to eventually wear through the flexible conduit, and then wear through the insulation of the want-on-wire inside the flex, which then caused it to short out. That caused the fire. Wasn't any major damage, and the pump-out vendor will replace the wiring. There was some other damage they were scheduled to come and fix that took place at Allen Days, smashing some PVC conduit along the dock. I will insist they get a permit, put a junction box at the top of the dock itself with a disconnect switch, and redo the installation running to the pump-out unit according to National Electric Code, which it is not currently. While walking the floating dock with the engineer, I noticed some of the planking and bullrails need replacing. Also, there's no water connection to the fire hose box, no hose in it, nor is it permanently attached to the dock. Don is going to work on the bullrails when they do the electrical repair to the pump-out, as that's where the line needs to be repaired. Firehouse issue, or fire hose issue, as one will resolve as part of the other project, as well as planks. Several of the planks need to be taken up to run electrical conduit and water lines, so it makes sense to wait on the plank replacement until the project is underway. Parking at the North Shore. We had previously discussed the potential of widening the space across from the North Shore boat launch for trailer parking. I had asked Olson and Associates to come out and mark the property corners for us, so we can get an idea of how much room we have to work with, and how much dirt we'll need to move to see if this is a feasible idea or not. Survey was out there working today. I went out there, took a look, but I couldn't find any corner stakes. They did have a control stake in what appears to be the center of the property, so depending on what the actual width is, it looks like this may work. Wedding shows. Rather than run the ad in a wedding magazine, as we have for the past three years, that'd cost approximately $1,200, try and market the gazebo. We've elected not to do that this year, but to have a booth and a couple of wedding shows instead. We're developing some marketing materials, brochure, banner for the booth, et cetera, and we'll save money over the cost of an ad. The ad paid for itself, but that was about it. We need to be marketing our, we need our marketing efforts to be more productive than that. The shows we're considering are in January and February in either Olympia or Puyallup. We're also looking to see if there are any in Kitsap County we can be a part of. Cost of booth space runs between $250 and $700, depending on the size and location in the show. IT issues. We had an ongoing problem scanning from our copiers to our computers. We'd worked with both Charles and Kelly Imaging trying to solve it, but it seemed to be somewhat intermittent, which made it hard to track down. Turns out it originated with a Windows 10 security update and continued off and on for a couple of months. However, an additional Windows update, and Kelly working on it via remote, seemed to solve the problem. I'm also going to set all your iPads up with a VPN, which means private for, virtual private network. I'm seeing our laptops and our port, or setting our laptops and port phone up as well. What a VPN does is make your devices invisible to hackers, which is a very real problem in places with public Wi-Fi and/or open networks, places like hotels. You notice when you connect to Wi-Fi in a hotel, it says unsecured network. That's what we're talking about. Also, we were forced to purchase a copy of QuickBooks 2018 to be able to access files from 2015 that Dave Myers needed. Kind of felt like dealing with ransomware. Endurus issues. We recently received our 2019 invoice from Endurus. It's approximately 15% higher than last year. They did warn us there would be an increase in the letter we received in April. Checking with them, we have liability insurance on the oyster house, since we own it and it's on our property. However, we had no coverage for the building itself should something happen to it, like if it caught fire or even collapsed upon itself. I did ask Endurus to cover it and expect we will get a bump in our premiums for it, but I believe it's just prudent to cover it. I've added $500 to the Endurus budget item over their bill as the anticipated cost. iFiber radio. I was recently asked if we'd be willing to do regular monthly updates on KMAS radio. Naturally, I agree. Went down there and did an on-air interview on August 28th, giving them an update on the Marina project, as well as a couple of other things. If any of you wanna do this, they would welcome that, and it could be done via telephone. Commissioner Scott and myself did this when I first came here, but we haven't done anything since then. As you know, the Port Shelton won the WPPA Innovation Award for doing the exact same thing. Vacation schedules. Leanne is planning vacations, September 13th to 22nd. I still have five days left of vacation time, seven days of unused sick time this year, and 12 accumulated from last year. I'll be using two days on one of those, September 12th and 13th, and two more, September 19th and 20th. WPPA meeting schedules. Well, environmental seminars, September 27th and 28th at Skamania Lodge. Small Port seminars, October 18th and 19th in Leavenworth, and the annual meeting is December 5th through the 7th at the Hyatt Regency at Bellevia. We need to know who's planning on going to what meeting, so we can get reservations made. So, if you wanna go into old report, I'll continue, or old business, I'll continue on, or.
Yeah, 'cause that's the first item, this old business on Marina expansion project.
Okay, the Art Anderson contract has been signed all the way around. I received a copy of the preliminary design on Friday, so we should be ready to send this out to bid shortly. Also met with Denny Klein, the engineer from Art Anderson and Associates, that did the engineering drawings for the project. Another engineer from their office, Bill Ray, as well as Mike Dom and another fellow from the PUD, looking at what needs to be done to bring the required amount of power to the dock, get some cost estimates for that, as well as scheduled work. Have an application for the PUD. I had planned on having it completed by now, but I still need some questions answered before I can finish it. And quite frankly, working on the budget has slowed all that down. However, that isn't the only delay we're dealing with. As I reported last month, according to the executive order issued by the governor, we had to send the tribes a letter telling them they have a 30-day window to comment on the project and specify if there are any cultural artifacts at the site. I sent those letters to the Squaxons and the Cohomish tribes, received an inquiry from the Squaxons about the amount of trenching needed. I respond to that, and although the tribe responded after the 30-day deadline, the State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation has decided they want an archaeological study done on the area where we're going to be digging to transfer power and water conduits. I tried convincing them that that particular 30 square feet of ground has been dug up, recovered, paved over at least twice over the years, but to no avail. They still want the survey done. So we wondered if a similar survey had been done for the boat ramp rebuild project in 2002, and if so, could we use that? We found some records of who the consultant was, and I contacted them. They'd done a partial survey, but the DAHP wants a complete new one. Bill Ray had given me some names of people who do this, and I've contacted, connected with one of them who's already working on it starting yesterday. None of the others seem to be able to begin the work before the end of October or later. Bill Ray also suggests that we have the survey done on the entire park, so if we have additional projects like the oyster house, which in all likelihood will require one as well, it's already done. This won't cost a lot more in the overall scheme of things, and like the programmatic shorelines permit, that'll cover all our facilities for the next five years. This works the same way. There's some minimal additional cost for it, but it'll save us money and time in the long run. We also have to do a one-time secret report for the old launcher ramp removal, but it too will cover the entire park and all our facilities. We do have money allocated in the project for permitting, and this approach may actually cost slightly less than I originally estimated, so in the end, overtime will save money doing it this way. Also, the electrical and plumbing contractors will be pulling their own permits for their portion of the job, not us.
Great.
Sweetwater Park. Joe Brogan rewrote the transfer letter. I approved it and sent it off to Kim Sellers at RCO, copied Dana Rosenbach and Mendy Harlow on it. Spoke with Dana at the EDC event here, and she thanked me for getting that done. Also attended the grant presentation at RCO with Mendy. I thought she did a good job presenting that. It went pretty well. There were lots of questions from the review panel, which I thought was a good sign. Our grant manager, Kim Sellers, did as well. Now we just have to wait what's been decided.
Do you know when that's gonna be decided? Do you know when they?
No, I do not. I do not. And I actually called Mendy and asked her, and she didn't know either.
Okay.
Oyster House, lots of progress to report this month. Commissioner Scott, myself, Mike Ross, the contractor, Walter Giliski, and Bonnie Knight, all met with Nicholas Van from the Department of Archaeology and Historical Presentation on August 23rd to get clarifications and answers we needed to move forward. It was a very productive meeting. Just about all the questions we needed answered were addressed. Mike is working on design elements and the scope of work, Bill Ray on permitting issues, Bonnie Knight on fundraising and grants application, and myself on coordinating whatever else needed between everyone and Commissioner Scott. Bonnie Knight did secure a historical grant of $160,000, so we can once again begin moving forward with things that cost money now that we'll have some. Port may need to front some of that money and be reimbursed by the Historical Society at the grant proceeds. We also have a building permit for the rebuild of the floor structure in hand. Additionally, we got a bid from Nichols Brothers on the cost of moving the building to its final location. That cost is $29,300 plus tax and some insurance cost. All totaled, it'll be around $32,000, which is significantly less than what I was quoted over the phone before they came out and looked at it. One slowdown is the contractor, Walter Golitsky, is withdrawn from the project. He has some health issues and looking to wrap up all his projects and retire. Bonnie was going to ask Frank Merrill for a bid on the remaining floor structure work, and I'm going to tap the Kitsap Building Association, of which we're members, for some additional names of qualified contractors around the MRSC small works roster. One concern to still be resolved is exactly who's going to manage the project. If the port does it, all work must be done at prevailing wage. I asked for and got an opinion from the state auditor on this. If the Historical Society manages the project, they can use volunteers, in-kind donations, and the lowest bidder, except on work funded with government money. The problem is, the port is eligible for grants, Historical Society isn't, so us raising the money could be faster and easier. But with the port managing it and doing the work, it'll cost significantly more as well. At this point, we're trying to get some solid figures together, so we know how much money this project is going to need, assuming prevailing wage rates, so we can begin looking for grants and submit a capital budget request. Both Representative Griffey and Senator Sheldon have said they will advocate for this in the capital budget once we have some solid numbers. I also met with the head of Senate Ways and Means Committee last week, and she told me to let her know when, what we needed when the tide comes. Criminalization of Marina rules. Commissioner Jackson and I have been trying to resolve this with the sheriff's office about, with the sheriff's office for some time now. Sheriff Salisbury has said to put our request together in written form, he would review it. I will have that complete early next week. Commissioner Jackson and myself will then get together and set up a meeting with the sheriff, so we can hopefully put this to rest once we're through. Kitsap Allport Association, next meeting is the end of October. That's my report.
Great. Thank you, Larry. New business items. Discussion of the preliminary 2019 budget. And set a date for the work session in public hearing.
Yeah, I talked with Scott. He said any Wednesday or Thursday after the 17th works for him. So if we want to...
Yeah, I'd like to... Yeah.
But he's not going to be back until then.
I have the 19th open.
Yeah, hold on. Trying to get my calendar up here. I will be gone on the 19th. That's one of the days I'm gone, and so is Leanne.
The 20th also?
I will be gone the afternoon of the 19th and 20th and 21st.
Oh, so that's right, because you mentioned about the 25th. Which is a Tuesday, because I'm, I'm not available on the 18th.
The, how's the 26th and 27th or 28th work?
27th would work best for me of that week, or 28th would actually work also, the Friday night.
Scott doesn't like Friday nights, but Thursday?
27th. Yeah, he said Wednesday, I think Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
Thursday will work for me.
All right. What time?
Six o'clock.
Six? Well, with the budget, let's take a look at it, but I would like to have Scott here too, to really do some more in-depth discussion, unless you want to...
I'll, let me get this on my calendar, and I'll go through some of it with you.
The 27th.
This is my calendar. My computer didn't sync it on. Cooperation.
Is that going to be a public hearing or a work session?
It'll be a public hearing and a work session.
Oh, thank you.
Hold on, I gotta start this all over again. Just one, let me edit it. Okay, got it. All right, so, budget. Okay, looking at overall revenue, you can see what we budgeted in 2018, what our year-to-date revenue is, and what the percentage of the budget is there. So on property tax revenue, we're at 57.68%. So we're, actually, we'll take in more revenue than we anticipate. New construction. We didn't change that figure at all, because we can't get a figure out of the county. And we don't know whether that figure was high or low or what, but it seemed to work last year. Please hold excise tax. Accurate figure there, just 14% of what we originally budgeted. Timber excise tax, we're 76% there, so we budgeted low for that. Budgeted the same as last year. Investment interest, budgeted the same as last year. Timber trust, though, you can see we budgeted 11.5 last year, but we've taken in 71.117 this year, and we still have three months to go. That's 618% over what we budgeted. So we budgeted 25,000. Anything over 25,000 would be a windfall. Gazebo rental, we budgeted 10. We budgeted 10 for next year, and right now, we're at 71.76%, so that's probably a pretty accurate figure. Meeting room rental, you know, you can see all of these. Where, if you look at them, everything is pretty much, you know, in line with what we budgeted, or we've taken in more than we budgeted, which is the way I like it. And where we did have in surplus, we budgeted $100, but we sold the old truck for 2,000, so, but we just budgeted 250 for next year. And nothing else there. You know, the, they're all pretty much the same, and they're consistent with the year before as well.
Are we going to try to do the gazebo bricks anymore?
Yeah, we still got a lot more of them to sell. And I wanted to ask you guys how you thought about that. That's why I left, we didn't budget anything there, so I wanted to know if you guys wanted to do that again this year, or you think we'd be better to wait till next year? Costs us about $1,000 to do it, so, you know, we need to sell at least 10 bricks. We've got about, I think, 40 left to sell.
Well, we can hit it again next year.
Yeah, I think hitting it next year, just letting it go this year, and, you know, there might be more demand next year.
Yeah, you think about starting early in January?
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
Okay.
So, but anyway, total revenue, you know, we budgeted, or last year, we had 328, 988 was what we budgeted. Right now, we're at 81.95% of what we budgeted for revenue, and we still got three years, or three months left, plus September. So we will exceed what we budgeted last year. For next year, we budgeted 345, 353, and I expect we'll exceed that next year. Because, once again, we don't know about property tax revenue, we don't know about deconstruction, and we don't know about timber, timber tax. Then we look at expenses. You know, if you look at payroll expenses, we're all right in line with where we budgeted, except for mileage for me, which is heavy, but that's trips to Spokane for bias. That's what that is. You know, we had the bias rally that we didn't budget for, because we didn't know we were going to do bias. And we had bias training, so...
And there won't be near as much this year?
No, should not be. Should not be. Then payroll. Get into professional, professional fees here. I did have the lobbyist in there at $24,000, which is what we had agreed upon with them if you guys decide to hire them. Bias, they told me 5%. I added actually a little bit more than 5, just to make the numbers round out. About 5.8 or something. Marina and dock expenses. We went through these, we took a lot of this stuff out of bias, and this was where we were able to find a lot of the anomalies in bias. And when we looked at revenue from the pay machine, it was almost $7,000. But when we looked at what bias said, it said it was $1,000 in annul, which we know is way off. And so we've been able to find those by doing this process and fix those. So bias should be pretty accurate for us next year. You see the Oyster House line item there for the capital budget. And then travel expenses, you know, that's based on hotel rates and what we did last year and WPPA schedule. Same thing with meals, parking, tolls, all of that stuff, all comes, you know, based on WPPA stuff. Education, same, and conference fees, the same thing, training classes, the same way. So. When we look at the water utility, I did add in $1,000 worth of rate increases. And I added 37.50 for one connection fee, because we've had a lot of calls from people wanting to know if, if I buy this piece of property, how much is the connection fee, and are you the provider? And I would say in the last three months, we've had six or seven of those calls.
Good.
So somebody's going to buy one piece of property and connect. I'm pretty confident.
Hope so.
But if you look at the expenses, the expenses are not out of line, and they're not up from last year at all. Capital budget, we've got the grant for the Marina. The grant, the amount was 376 something, but they hold back. I forget what the percentage is, but 364, 720 is what we would net out of that. I did include money for property acquisition, and what we, what I anticipate we would want for the Oyster House, 200,000. Although that could go up or down depending on, I need some numbers from Mike. I had asked him about like the cost, how many piles? And he wasn't sure, and he wasn't sure what kind. I talked to pile driving contractor. That's the first question they want to know. You know, until I can get an answer to that, I can't really calculate what it is. You know, when I say, if I have 10 piles, how much is it? Well, how thick is the steel on them, and a bunch of other questions. And Mike, I texted him about it, and he sent me a text back saying it'd be a couple of weeks before he has that information.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, I had to put a number in here.
Right.
And between this and the 160 that the Historical Society has, I'm not sure we'll be able to spend all that money in 2007, or 2019. And the reason is, we don't know how long the archaeological survey is going to take. We don't know how long it's going to take to finish the structural work before we can move the, the building. We don't know how long it's going to take to do the pilings, or how much it's going to cost. We don't know. And we're dealing with the fish window for both that and tearing out the old launch ramp, so...
I know, without all the...
We got too many unanswered questions. We don't have a really solid number, so I put that number in there, thinking between the two of them, you know, that's the best-case scenario. Capital projects, you know, they balance out with the revenue. So. And then, you know, we just have our general budget totals, so... If you look at, let me blow this up so I can read it. General fund revenue, 345, 353. What we have in the state pool, 3814. General fund expenditures, 345. That leaves us 3898. Water fund revenue, the 10, 880. We have 2,300 state pool balance, $1,000 reserve fund, and 10,052 in expenses, which leaves us a balance of 4127. Capital projects, they balance out at 1,68,720. IDD fund revenue, which, you know, does, doesn't do anything but sit there and get interest. And that, but we gained almost $10,000 there, if you look at that. Well, not 10, about 6,000. So our total revenue is 563, 172 cents. Total expenditures, 355, 322, 91. Which leaves us 207,777, 81. Have 20,000 in reserve fund. Estimated expenses from January to, through April, when we get our property tax collections, 125,000. We currently have in holding account, 16,525. Well, not just the holding account, holding account, tax account, and interest account, 16, 525, 79. So that leaves our cash carryover at 79, 303, 60. Like I said, if we hadn't purchased the truck at 26, if we hadn't budgeted 24 for the lobbyists, or added 5 to the January to April expenses, our cash carryover would be 134, 627, which is up 32, 337 over 2018. So I would say we managed our money pretty well over the course of the year, even with the unanticipated expenses. So in looking through all of this question...
I'm still digesting a few things.
Just one question. You, the attorney fees, you didn't increase?
No, we had a lot of attorney expenses in dealing with the land transfer in Sweetwater Park and dealing with Marina rules. That was the majority part.
I'm just wondering for next year, if we want to just increase it.
We can.
I mean, I don't want to write on this, but that would be the note.
What do you think we ought to up it to?
At least 1,000. With the projects that are going on and possibly the purchase of the property.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'd love to...
Hopefully, we don't use it, but if we do, I mean, we...
Yeah. Yeah, we budgeted 4,000, and what we've used this year is 45, 16, so... But like I said, a lot of it was back and forth about the property at Sweetwater Park. You know, we had them write the letter, and then rewrite the letter, and then, you know, dealing with the other stuff as well, so...
Well, Larry, I talked to you before about the Oyster Hou, Oyster House capital budget. You know, the year before, we had 14,000. Now it's 5. And, you know, just, this is just for the good of the record, is that with the grants that are coming in, and hopefully the capital budget, but that's kind of like pie in the sky. So it kind of concerns me, but with the grant that North Bay is getting, you know, they'll probably need some monies upfront for expenditures, and is that something that we can use?
If we had to, we could borrow from IDD.
Okay. You think that would probably be appropriate?
You, you know, it would depend on what we had for cash on hand at the time, but...
Okay. Just want to make sure it gets done.
Yeah. You know, like I said, I just have reservations. Would we be able to spend that much money this year, or this coming year, just based on the timing of things?
Yeah, you know, the hard part is that it all hinges kind of on, on what kind of costs Mike can, can, come up with. And then, once we get that, then we can really go forward.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot more realistic picture, but until then, we don't, you know, we're guessing.
Yeah. Just, speaking of the Oyster House, I too have been making a few calls to a few contractors, and they're just really busy. But one guy in particular is, would love to work on it, so I'll talk to you more about him, but he's a year and a half out. But he's a year and a half out, but he would love to work on it, but he's so busy. But, you know, the way things are going, it might, might be good timing. I don't know.
Yeah, I mentioned it at the KBA board meeting last week. And most people just kinda laughed.
Cause of the time, yeah.
Cause they're so busy.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not that there's anything wrong with the project, they're all just too busy to take on anything else.
Yep.
So I think we've, you know, we've got those kinda things to deal with as well. Who knows when it's gonna be that we can get somebody to actually work on it.
Well, getting the numbers together is critical. That's, that's the hinging point.
Nobody knows that more than me.
Yes, that's true. Well, I, I wanna discuss this a lot more. I don't have, other than the Oyster House, the other, you know, it looks, looks good to me. But I'd like to make sure that we have an opportunity to talk with Scott and, and everything.
That's why we're gonna have the public hearing and another meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, and, you know, with the lobbyists, I'm still unsure about that one. But again, it's because I haven't worked with them before. You have, you're confident that they can bring in more money.
Well, as I said, you know, for me, for twenty-five thousand dollars, I got a seven hundred thousand the first year.
Yeah. So I think that's why I have a little reservation, but I wanna take some time to talk about it.
Well, let's, let's get them here and let them answer the question.
Yeah, let's do that.
And if nothing else, I think you need to express your reservations to them because, you know, that may give us some negotiating leverage on front.
Well, that would be good. But we'll see, yeah. Do you have any other questions to add or, or discussion?
Make a comment on the lobbyists. I mean, lobbyists wait in gold is what doors they can open, so. And the firm that, we got the proposal from, I, I know them fairly well. So they could open a lot of doors.
Good. Good to know, that's great.
I actually think twenty-four thousand for what they can do, they're a bargain.
Good. Well, I don't know, do you wanna take time to try to vote on it or wait for?
No, I would wait for Scott's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would ask it away first.
I feel better about that.
He has a lot of questions about, about it. And I would rather he was here to ask them directly. And, you know, that you all here, what the questions are and what the answers are.
Totally. I'm good with that. Great. Okay, next item would be the release of payment to Northwest Water?
Yeah. Do y'all have any heartburn about us including the twenty-five hundred in the vouchers next month?
No, I don't. If they're done, then they've done their job, but-
Yeah, I was gonna hold on to it till we got the approval, but, you know, I think they've acted in good faith, which I wasn't convinced of at the start of the project, but I believe they have. I believe they went out of their way to, to work hard for us.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Good. Head count for environmental seminar? I don't know if I'm gonna go or not. I, that's at Skamania, correct? Gosh, what date was that again? Do you have that off the top of your head?
No, I have it on my head.
Okay.
Late September.
I probably won't go to that.
I think it was right around the time of our meeting.
Oh.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh.
Oh, go figure, right? Maybe we should look at that.
You might be right, so, hold on, man, let me look.
Cause you were gonna go.
September twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth.
Oh.
So I guess nobody's going, is that it?
Well, in the past, it was helpful, but I, I, right now, I think we've got enough team, like with Bill, you know, to help us navigate through stuff, so I don't feel like it's super important, you know. I mean, it's important, but not critical to us right now.
Last year, it seemed to be more geared towards the bigger ports.
Yeah. Cleanup and, I mean, big brown fields and, you know, the tasks that they have to go through.
Money and that other stuff. But it seemed to me there wasn't a lot there that pertained to us and ports our side, not just us.
Well, I went to get educated on really what it takes to do all that. So it's really helped to know the, the CIPA process, the JAR, but all that stuff. It really helps to understand that, but, but I don't think I need to go. And I don't know if Scott wants to go, but I think we're good with our twenty-seventh meeting.
Be busy.
Yeah, we're good to go. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds great to me. Anything else?
Discussion of potential property purchase. If you want me to contact her and just say, we're gonna engage an appraiser and kinda take it from there.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out, yeah, we would have to do that because if we go for a grant or an acquisition, we would have to know what it, what it would be, so yes.
Exactly. So I think the first step is getting an appraiser, getting the appraisal done. And then there is a grant available, the deadline for the grant is November first.
Oh, okay.
It's not that complicated a grant, so I'll go ahead and get it written down.
That'd be great.
But I need, again, I need a number.
Yeah.
Can you just give me a little history, why in two thousand seventeen, we approached Denise to purchase the property?
What it was, was the, it's the piece on the corner right here. They're elderly people. I don't know how elderly, but-
Her dad was a commissioner at one time, too. Right? Her dad was a commissioner? Denise Ogren?
I don't think so.
I thought he was a commissioner.
No, they were very active in the park.
Okay.
And they've been there forever.
Yeah.
And just by the way, we talked about this six, seven years ago. We talked to them then and they were not ready to give anything back, so.
Yeah, it would be just contiguous on our property, that's all.
That way we don't all have it.
Do we have an idea what we wanna do with the property?
What I would do with the grant would be for is something to enhance the marina or the boat launch. And I don't think doing anything with the house itself, except tearing it down, would be beneficial to us. I don't see us using a grant for office space or storage or anything else. And, you know, if they, if they go to sell it, they're gonna have to pay a real estate commission and closing costs and whatever repairs are, and I think repairs might be substantial.
Yeah.
Repairs that a lender would require. So, you know, I don't think we wanna do those repairs either. So to me, it just makes the most sense to just tear it down and use the property or something else. A great spot to park boat trailers. I mean, that'd work with a boat ramp.
Well, even just getting the property for right now, you know, for future, even if we don't change anything.
Well, even if we don't.
Yeah.
You know, so. But I, I think having it makes sense for us. Cause it's the only piece of this whole square that we don't have.
Yeah.
You know, from Everheart to Drum Street, that's the only piece of it that we're missing.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll go ahead and get an appraiser to figure it out. You know, they're busy too, so that might take a little bit of time.
True. Good, any other questions before we go to public comment?
I have none.
Nope? Oh, goodie, I get to hear from public. Hi, public? Bonnie? Ken, please?
Yeah. I'm Ken Van Busker from Davis Farm Road in Bel Air. And I appreciate Commissioner Jackson asking about property, cause I wasn't sure what it was. There are some costs involved with tearing the house down. But one thing you might consider is donate it to the fire department and have them use it as a training exercise. We were successful doing that ourselves.
I know somebody could probably help with that.
It's not, it's not his district, though. Yeah. Anyway, at the last meeting, I presented all those comments about the grant venture. And I see that they got posted on the website and I appreciate that. Those were all the agency comments, but the, there's still two hundred and some public comments that, and if you get the opportunity, you might wanna check those out. But one of the questions that came up at that meeting last time, you had asked about the Hood Canal Environmental Council.
Oh, yes, I found out more about that.
I went to their last meeting and invited the president to come. They're celebrating their fiftieth, she couldn't come this evening. They're celebrating their fiftieth year next year.
Wow.
And it's a pretty vibrant organization with a lot of pretty well-known folks on it. And I brought their-
Newsletter?
Newsletter, and I thought I'd leave it with you folks, so.
Great.
It's a good group of people and I, I know some of the Silverdale Port people are involved with it. Even though they don't have property on the Hood Canal, they are involved with the Hood Canal Environmental Council. So I, if I can, I just thought I'd-
Sure, great. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Bonnie, anything?
I guess I'll report on our side of the Sergeant Oyster project. And we didn't, I'd met with Mike, we're going over the numbers, and he did. There is a possibility that volunteers could do the floor. He mentioned that in email, which would be a huge savings if we could do that. And he and I are getting together on the numbers and by December, we'll know what else we're gonna need for the capital project. I'm not quite sure, I have to sit down and talk to Larry about how the budget is laid out. I didn't quite understand if we fit in there or not. And I got a, got an interesting thing, the Shelton Bowling Alley is being torn down. They're salvaging it and-
Where's that at? Ask a stupid question, get a stupid answer.
It's on my tree going out of town. It's, it burned, it burned a number of years ago. And there's a salvage company in there now. And they wanna keep the lumber local, so I've contacted, put in a message for them. I'm gonna try to catch up with them because it was built at the same time period. And if we could salvage lumber from that, it would be great to be able to use that on the, on the building. And it's a legitimate salvage company, so it would be good solid lumber. The biggest thing with trying to do the floor ourselves, he says we need lots of strong men. So we'll see how that goes.
She was looking at you, Ted.
Hi. No, other than that, I've got, you know, I keep applying for grants. If any of them come through, I'll let you know. The capital project, capital facilities grant can't be, can't be used until after July first next year. So if the port has any money extra laying around, it would certainly help us to move past this point. Once, I think we've got enough to do the floor and so does, so does Mike. But the other extraneous stuff, the permits and stuff like that is, you know, the port can carry those, that's great. But if he can figure out how to do that, and I suspect, I, I think I know what he has in mind. But if we could do that, that would be great and it would move things along. Once the floor is done, the walls will go really fast. We just have to get the lumber and I think we'll have the money for that too, so that's where we are with it.
I haven't talked to Mike in a week or so, but has he, has he talked to the lumber company that is thinking about helping us with that? Yeah, okay.
I don't know which company that was.
It was Mitchell.
Oh, he hasn't said anything. I don't think he's gonna talk to him till he knows what he actually needs.
Needs, okay.
But I, I'm just, I'm just thinking that he is figuring out a way to be able to do it without having to hire a contractor, that volunteers could actually do it. And that way it reduces the cost like crazy. And if we can tie into this salvage thing, we could have that floor done pretty quickly. So that would make things go a lot faster and, you know, that Rex has already committed to taking out the launch ramp. So that saves like thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And he's, he does demolition, so he's already got the equipment and stuff lined up, if we have a place to put it. And hopefully, you've talked with Jack.
I haven't talked to Jack yet, but I'm not too worried. Yeah, I, I think so.
He needs stuff in that big hole. And he's got a huge hole, but he keeps filling stuff. I mean, that's perfect, it doesn't have to be concrete.
We will need more equipment, however, because Rex has said he will need some more equipment. I've got my dump trailer, but anyway, we'll work it.
He said he had a side loader.
Okay.
So some friend of his up in Lakeland Village has the equipment that, that he said anytime we could go ahead and use it. So, yeah, there's some promises out there, when that happens, we need to start calling him in.
Great.
Because we do have a person that committed to do the concrete work if we provided materials. And if Bill comes through with piling from those, he's talking to several ports and-
Wash Dot.
Wash Dot and others that have excess piling. And if he could work that, that would be huge.
Yeah.
And then it's a matter of getting it in the ground, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we are making big progress. I know it looks like it's huge, but it's, I think we're gonna get there.
Question, you know, when you said the bowling alley, I remember when it burned down. That's the one on the main highway there.
Yeah.
I just didn't think there was anything left. That's why I was wondering.
I don't know what they have. I don't know what they have. Yeah, it doesn't look like there's much left there, but they've apparently got something, cause somebody already offered to buy it.
Okay.
And they said no, that they wanted to keep the lumber local, so.
There's an abandoned-
Building?
Bowling alley about along Front Street.
Oh, oh, on Front Street?
Yeah, on Front Street, on First Street.
Okay.
And they call it the-
Bowling Alley? Oh, okay.
Faded red color, Florida.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, well, that makes sense then.
Never went to that one, well, that's even better.
Okay.
Yeah, Helen and Mike Lester put me onto it tonight, so I got-
Great.
Sent them a message right away because period lumber would be great.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
And I don't have anything else. We're gonna have a meeting on-
The eighth, Saturday.
That's with Mike and Kate.
Kate.
We're gonna be meeting regarding the historic preservation part of it. And then I wanna have a North Bay Historic Society meeting, which I don't know if we need to have it combined with the port at this point.
I don't think we have to unless they wanna attend. We haven't before.
No, I'm being with you.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
I'll be there, okay.
Sure, yeah.
It'll be a combined meeting again.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I just gotta send out the notice and catch up.
What day, do you know? What day were you on?
Second Tuesday.
Hmm, I might be busy. Is that, what day is that? I'll be there.
Is it tonight?
It's six o'clock.
Is it October or September?
No, September.
So it's September.
So it's like next Tuesday.
September eleventh.
Oh, yeah, I think I actually have that written down.
Yeah.
I think.
And we haven't been getting a lot of people, so I think we'll get the small group that we, we've had pretty consistently going along. So we've had volunteers that have been ready to help, but we haven't been able to use them yet. So when we are at that point, we do have some qualified carpenters and that that are ready to help.
Great. What time is the meeting, Bonnie?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the capital projects, and it, and it looked like, Larry, it looks like you're asking for, are you guys gonna go for grants for the Oyster House too?
Yeah.
So that was, I wasn't sure which part that was in the budget.
Two hundred thousand in there as a placeholder number.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I saw the hundred and sixty thousand, I wasn't quite sure if that was-
That's on top of that.
But that's, that's a separate grant or is that what the, that's not the one we're talking about for us? Okay.
No, the one that, that you've got is separate from what we're gonna ask for in the capital budget.
Okay, yeah, just to be clear, we cannot use that money. We can't spend it on anything until July first because that's when the legislature, I mean, we will know ahead of time, but you can't actually spend it until July first.
Right.
So it looks like you guys got money from the, from the eighteen, so you can send that now.
Great.
That's all I got.
Good, any other questions?
No.
Any other questions?
I talked, when I spoke to you, Bonnie, last month, I talked about getting a rendition, something that we could start putting up around town with the Oyster House. The hope is, what it'd look like. I think that's important. I was with a bunch of people on Sunday and they were asking me the same question over and over again. And I keep on telling them, the rendition that I saw would be a very, it'd be a very nice addition to Al. So, and I can't find that rendition anywhere.
I'm thinking of a store here, but we'll find it. We do have brochures. I don't know if you saw the brochures, but it tells what the project is, tells the things that we need, which needs to be updated again. But it has the picture of it and pictures of moving it and-
Well, I'd like to get some to put them up where I know these people frequent, so, I mean, so.
Well, Mike said that with his- Well, Mike said that with his, with his, with the changes at that meeting, and I gave you a copy of the notes from that meeting, because there were some really rock-bottom things that Mike really wanted to know, and some of the things ended up being changed. I think there's a cantilever deck on the side of that. Now they're talking about it to be like the original was, and I do have pictures from the original, and so that's kind of up in debate, because Bill's going to have to see if he can get that through Fish and Wildlife, and if that's so, Mike's talking about a new rendition of it, but I think the old one, I think if we could find that, we could get some prints made, because it's, it's a very powerful project, and we, you know, if you put out the list of contributors, we've had Taylor Shellfish and Green Diamond and the Squawson Tribe, and, I mean, we've got a big list of, you know, really diverse list of people that have contributed, so I can, I can put that together for you, and maybe, if you want to use the brochure now, you guys have any?
We have a lot of brochures, actually, up at the office.
At least you would have those, and then I'll talk to Mike to see if we can't get something that we can have printed up. In fact, he might have had, he might have already had some printed up, but I'll talk to him about that.
All right.
That'd be great, that would be just great.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Anything for the good of the order? Ken?
I just wanted to, I forgot, when I was up there, I wonder if you could post the draft budget on the website or at the public hearing, put it up on screen so the public can see what it is you're talking about.
Yeah, I think we usually do.
We actually tried to put it up there, and we couldn't figure out how to maybe work on it real soon.
It would be helpful.
Yeah, no, that was originally our intention.
Yeah, to put it on the website.
Well, no, I meant to put it up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It would just, it would be helpful if we had the public-
Absolutely.
You know, I'll go ahead and send that to Greg right now.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ken. One thing for the good of the order, September twenty-fourth is candidate's debate, I guess is what, we're North Mason Community Voice and Chamber, North Mason Chambers working together for a candidate's night. September twenty-fourth at the Hub, which is one-one-one Old Bel Air Highway, and that's at seven o'clock. So that's all I have.
Three thirty.
To eight thirty.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll, we'll cut them off then, right? Anything else for the good of the order?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, so, so it is done. Thank you.